I'd like to call to order this meeting of the PBD City Council. Please show me in a moment a silent prayer. Counselors, you heard the motion, all in favor and you oppose. It's a vote. This meeting is being televised live on cable channel nine, is being taped by PBD Access TV, and is also being recorded by our city council stenographer. Counselors, we're going to move to item four A. Counselor Gravel, I'm sorry, would the clerk please read the notice of public hearing?
Notice here by given that the city council of the city of PBD, acting as a special permit granting authority, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, November 10th, 2016, at 7:30 PM in the Frank O'Wigan Auditorium, City Hall 24 Lowell Street, PBD Mass, on the application from Salem Country Club, 133 Forest Street, PBD Mass, for a special permit, special event application, to host the 2017 USGA Senior Open Championship. It said 133 Forest Street, PBD Mass, is filed in accordance with sections 6.1, 6.12, 1.1, and 15.7 of the PBD zoning ordinance. PBD City Council Councilor Peter M. McGinn, City Council President.
Counselor Gravel.
Thank you, Council President. At the request of the petitioner, I would like to request that the, this hearing be continued to the first meeting, or recessed to the first meeting of December, which is December 8th, I believe.
Before we take that motion to recess, Counselor, we've got a few items that maybe we could receive to this hearing, just to clean that up. So we've got, I see, a late receipt from the fire department that pertains to this. Could have a motion to receive that.
Motion to receive.
Counselors, you heard the motion for the late receipt that you have on your desks related to this, to refer to this to the special permit hearing, all in favor and you oppose, it's a vote. And there is also an email from yourself that pertains to this.
Move to receive.
Counselors, you heard the motion on the late receipt, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. And we also have item...
F.
Eight F.
Move to receive.
Counselors, hear the motion to receive item eight F and refer it to this hearing, all in favor and you oppose, it's a vote. Counselor Gravel has made a motion to recess to the December 8th meeting.
December, it's the December 8th meeting, please.
Counselors, you heard the motion to recess, all in favor, any oppose, it's a vote. Item four B, would the clerk please read the notice of public hearing?
Notice here by given that the city council of the city of PBD, acting as a special permit granting authority, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, November 10th, 2016, at 7:30 PM in the Frank O'Wigan Auditorium, City Hall 24 Lowell Street, PBD Mass, on the application from Gregor Krajasi, 767 Lowell Street, PBD Mass, for a special permit to operate a fast food restaurant, specifically pizza salads, sandwiches, and other foods associated with fast food. At 139 Linfield Street, PBD Mass, is filed in accordance with sections 4.2.5, 6.1, and 15.7 of the PBD zoning ordinance. PBD City Council Councilor Peter M. McGinn, City Council President.
Is the petitioner here this evening? Anybody representing the petition? If you could please come forward. If you could please state your name and address for the record.
Gregor Krajasi. My address is 767 Lowell Street, PBD Mass.
And if you could just give us a quick overview of what you'd like to do.
I'd like to do, on 139 Linfield Street, open a pizza sub shop.
Is there anybody here this evening that would like to speak in support of this application? Anybody here that would like to speak in support of this application? Is there anybody here this evening that would like to speak in opposition to this application? Anybody that would like to speak in opposition to this application? Seeing none, Counselor Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President. For my counsel, fellow counselors that don't know, this is the site of Zynga Frozen Yogurt in the Stonewood parking lot, which would be to the right of the entrance to Stonewood Restaurant. As you all know, there was a pizza place in the, in the Lot Sal's Pizza was the mainstay in the front. I think that it's, it's not an issue over the hours of operation at 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM, seven days a week. I don't have issue with that. It's kind of in conformity with the rest of the businesses in the plaza. I spoke to Greg earlier today, and he's got some quite extensive experience in the business. I'm confident, he's a PBD resident, I think if there were any issues, he's not too far away. So, that being said, I would be in favor of this.
Other counselors. Counselor Matsoulis.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to speak in favor of this because I've known Greg for probably 20 years, and he's been in the restaurant business, pizzas and subs, and he's been successful every place he's gone. That location that John is talking about needs a boost, and if anybody can make a go of it, I think Greg's the person that can do it. So, that's all I want to add to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Matsoulis. Other counselors? Counselor Turco.
Move to close the public hearing.
Yeah, before we close the hearing, we've got an item to receive to the hearing, which is item eight H.
Yeah, move to receive item eight H from Sharon Cameron.
Counselors, you heard the motion to suspend the rules to receive item eight H. Refer to this public hearing, all in favor and you oppose, it's a vote. Counselor Turco, motion to close the public hearing. You heard his motion, all in favor, any oppose, it's a vote. Counselor Turco.
Mr. President, move to approve the application of Gregor Krajasi, 767 Lowell Street, PBD Mass, for a special permit to operate a fast food restaurant, specifically pizza salad sandwiches and other foods associated with fast food. At 139 Linfield Street, PBD Mass, is filed in accordance with sections 4.2.5, 6.1, and 15.7 of the PBD zoning ordinance, with the two conditions contained in the packet won by the Health Department. Do I have to read that condition for the clerk?
If you would.
Per the Health Department, the plan must be reviewed, plan must be reviewed and approved by the Health Department prior to the start of construction. The plan review application and food establishment application must be filed with the Health Department. That's condition number one. Condition number two would be via the PBD Fire Department, all commercial cooking devices are to conform with NFPA 96 for fire protection and ventilation control, permit required through the Fire Prevention Department. Thank you.
Counselors, you heard the motion, roll call.
Counselors Matsoulis.
Yes.
Sinowitz.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Manning Martin. Charis.
Yes.
Sasla.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Garabedian.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to nothing.
Thank you very much.
Counselors, moving to item four C. There's been some interaction between the applicant and the office of the building commissioner. And, so if I could get a motion from Counselor Matsoulis to continue this hearing until such time as the building commissioner receives a plot plan showing all parking and their designations, and an affidavit stating that no junk cars or long-term storage of cars will be on the property. Have that motion.
You've heard the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Matsoulis. On the motion, Counselor Sinowitz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A while ago, I would say probably a year ago, I almost, I was looking at this property. And if it's the same one I'm thinking about, he operates out of the basement?
It's behind the building, yes.
So he has a license originally for, I believe, five cars? Is that what, is that my correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Well, there must have been 30.
Counselor Sinowitz, that's, that is part, part of the activity that the building commissioner has undertaken to, to explore those discrepancies.
Yeah.
So that's, that's, that is part of the rationale for why the building commissioner has requested that information before we proceed with this hearing.
There was a mess there, there was used cars, there was chemicals stored outside that were open, leaching into the ground at the time when I was, walked around the building, it was a disgrace. So, it needs to be brought back to five cars. It's like the Wild West over there. That's, that's just a comment to you.
Appreciate that, and I think you're, you are accurate in your observations. Other counselors? So you heard the motion to continue pending that information to be duly received by the building commissioner, all in favor, any oppose, it's a vote. Item four D, with the clerk, I'm sorry, yes, four D, would the clerk please read the notice of public hearing?
Notice here by given that the city council of the city of PBD will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, November 10th, 2016, at 7:30 PM in the Frank O'Wigan Auditorium, City Hall 24 Lowell Street, PBD Mass, on the application from Clifton Cash, 58 Pulaski Street, PBD Mass, for a junk dealer's license that said 58 Pulaski Street, PBD Mass. PBD City Council, Councilor Peter M. McGinn, City Council President.
Is the applicant here this evening? If you could please step forward and state your name and address for the record.
Mark Pelletier, 76 Clifton Avenue, Marblehead, Mass.
If you could give us just a quick overview of what you'd like to do.
I am a small tenant over at 58 Pulaski Street, and I do warehousing of my second-hand goods and sell them online out of there. So basically, just store them, pack them, and ship them, and send them out.
Thank you. Is there anybody here this evening that would like to speak in support of this application? Anybody here that would like to speak in support of this application? Is there anybody here that would like to speak in opposition to this application? Anybody here that would like to speak in opposition to this application? Seeing none, Counselor Matsoulis.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a pretty simple application. He's in the antique business. That building is, is full of, the similar businesses in there, and the neighbors were here, and we spoke, and there was no opposition to this. So it's a pretty simple application. I'll leave, leave it up to you for any other questions. So move, Mr. Chairman.
Other counselors. Counselor Sinowitz.
Thank you, Mr. President. Whenever these, these businesses come up, I'd just like to make sure that the items they're selling are always stored inside. I get if you're having a sale that day, and there might be space for you to put outside, but I don't want to see what happened, what happened on Harley Street.
Yeah, my, my stuff is completely inside. Everything I sell is online-based, so I don't sell anything to the general public. It's more of just a workshop, warehouse, storage, that type of situation.
Okay, all right. That's just my concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sinowitz. Other counselors? Seeing none, Counselor Matsoulis.
Yeah, I'd like to make a...
Counselor Matsoulis, before you close the hearing, if you could please refer item eight G to this hearing, under suspension of the rules?
Under suspension of the rules, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to receive, what number was that?
Eight G.
Eight G.
Counselors, you heard the motion, all in favor, any oppose, it's a vote. Counselor Matsoulis.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just, just for information for people who are out there listening to this that live in the neighborhood, there will be no deliveries at night, or any storage outside. That's already been discussed with the, with the neighborhood, people that were here, and there was, and both parties agreed to it. So, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Counselors, you heard the motion to close the public hearing, all in favor, any oppose, it's a vote. Counselor Matsoulis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to approve a junk dealer's license to Clifton Cash, doing business at 58 Pulaski Street. So move, Mr. Chairman.
Counselors, on the motion, Counselor, would you be amenable to adding the condition which was stipulated, or suggested by the Health Department on item eight G, which was to implement policies and procedures with respect to the receipt of sale of merchandise to ensure no nuisance conditions are created?
So move.
So what, that, you've, Counselors, you heard the motion with that one condition from, as suggested by the Health Department? Roll call.
Counselors Matsoulis.
Yes.
Sinowitz.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Sasla.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Garabedian.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to nothing.
Counselors, there was a omission on your, on your agenda. However, the information was in your packet, and it should be identified as item eight E, which is another junk dealer's license. So if I, the clerk could please read the notice of public hearing?
Notice here by given that the city council of the city of PBD will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, November 10th, 2016, at 7:30 PM in the Frank O'Wigan Auditorium, City Hall 24 Lowell Street, PBD Mass, on the application from J. Martin Furnishings, 58 Pulaski Street, PBD Mass, for a junk dealer's license at said 58 Pulaski Street, PBD Mass. PBD City Council, Councilor Peter M. McGinn, City Council President.
Is the petitioner here this evening? If you could please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Joanna Martin, 121 Green Street, Marblehead, Mass.
And if you could just give us a quick overview of what you would like to do?
It's basically very similar to Mark's. I, I deal in antiques, vintage furnishings, art, and basically any item you may find that you would decorate your home with. But there's nothing new, it's all vintage.
Thank you. Is there anybody here this evening that would like to speak in support of this application? Anybody that would like to speak in support of this application? Is there anybody here this evening that would like to speak in opposition to this application? Anybody that would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, Counselor Matsoulis.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors, this is a similar application, looking for a junk dealer's license in the same location, 58 Pulaski Street. And again, we met with the neighborhood, they have no problem with this, and if you have any questions, feel free.
Other counselors? Seeing none, Counselor Matsoulis, similar situation where of item eight I?
I'd like to, under suspension of the rules, receive item I, Mr. Chairman.
Counselors, hear the motion to suspend the rules to receive item eight I, all in favor, any oppose, it's a vote. Counselor Matsoulis.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Counselors, hear the motion, all in favor, any oppose, it's a vote. Counselor Matsoulis.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve a junk dealer's license to Joanne Martin, right?
Joanna.
Joanna Martin, doing business at 58 Pulaski Street. So move, Mr. Chairman.
Would you, again, same situation, Counselor, would you be amenable to adding that same condition as suggested by the Health Department?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
So that is implement policies and procedures with respect to receipt and sale of merchandise to ensure no nuisance conditions are created. That's a condition. Counselors, you heard the motion, one condition, roll call.
Counselors Matsoulis.
Yes.
Sinowitz.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Sasla.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yep.
Garabedian.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to nothing.
Item four F, would the clerk please read the notice of public hearing?
Notice here by given that the city council of the city of PBD will, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, November 10th, 2016, at 7:30 PM in the Frank O'Wigan Auditorium, City Hall 24 Lowell Street, PBD Mass, on the application from Tops Churascaria Inc., DBA, Oliviero Steakhouse, 72-74 Walnut Street, PBD Mass, requesting to amend their current entertainment license to allow for live entertainment, specifically karaoke, DJ, and live music to be performed Thursday through Sunday for private parties and social entertainment, that said 72-74 Walnut Street, PBD Mass. PBD City Council, Councilor Peter M. McGinn, City Council President.
Attorney Kelty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, matter, Council President and members of the city council. My name is John Kelty. I'm an attorney, I have offices at 40 Lowell Street in PBD, Massachusetts, and I appear on behalf of Tops Churascaria Inc., doing business at Oliviero's Steakhouse at 72-74 Walnut Street, PBD Mass. We are here this evening requesting an amendment to our entertainment license, and we've asked specifically that we be able to have live entertainment from 8:00 AM to 12:00 midnight, Thursday through Sunday. And we would, we've specifically asked for a three-piece band Thursday through Sunday, which would serve for private parties and social entertainment. And we've asked also for non-live radio, television, CD player, and digital jukebox. And, as you recall, this is the club, this is the restaurant that had, had its hours severely limited. There was a question of whether their alcoholic beverage license would be pulled. We've been under the limited hours since, at June, minimum of June 15th, June of 2015, and my client has, who is here this evening, has operated under those limited hours with no incidents, and however, it has limited his ability to have entertainment in the sense that he has occasional weddings, christenings, things like that, and that's what he wants, the reinstatement of the entertainment license is for. Happy to answer any questions specifically that you may have.
Is there anybody here this evening that would like to speak in support of this application? Anybody here that would like to speak in support of this application? Is there anybody here that, this evening, that would like to speak in opposition to this application? Anybody that would like to speak in opposition? Counselor Matsoulis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't want to bring up old stories, but we're all familiar what happened, and that was three years ago. And, there was another incident that we're all familiar with also, and that was Tipico. And, we yanked the license from both of them. Tipico lasted six months, they're out of business, and they're no longer in the neighborhood. The incident that happened there was similar to the one that happened for Oliviero's. And, I thought I was justified by doing what I did. And, the reason that Oliviero's lasted and Tipico didn't is because Tipico, Oliviero's is a very legitimate family restaurant, and they do very well. And I'm not going to sit here and praise them, but I'm going to tell you why I'm speaking like this. The owner of Oliviero's, I have a barbershop up the street from them, which most of you know. Oliviero's, the owner came up to see me two, three, four times, and I wouldn't talk to him. And I didn't feel good about it. You know, I didn't, I, when he came to see me, I wouldn't discuss it. And when I did discuss it with him, I said, "Look, we're not ready to give you a license, you have to prove yourself." So, we waited a year, waited two years. In the meantime, I've kept my eye and ears on what goes on in that place. And I'm going to tell you, the reports I got back, and I don't go in there personally, I don't go into any areas where I'm the city councilor, where they sell their alcohol, but the reports I got back were excellent. And, we're going on the third year right now, and I did speak to the owner this time. And I did encourage him to come and put his application in. But, I'll tell you my feelings, okay? Only because, when it comes to the trouble that I saw three years ago, I'm skeptical, and I don't ever want to see that happen again. And, I had to think about this, and what I'm going to do. I am going to agree to what he's asking for, but I'm only going to agree till 11 o'clock, and not 12. And my thinking is, that if you're going to have a wedding, most people leave a wedding early, they don't stay, they stay there right till the very end, till 1:00. You know, the weddings I go to are, are, we'll say, gatherings. I am going to approve their license up till 11 o'clock, and if they want to come back in another six months or a year from now, we have no incidences at all, then, Counselors, it's up to you to decide whether you, you want to go that route. But, that's where I'm going this evening. Oliviero's has proven themselves, they've stayed out of trouble, they have a clean reputation. The place is, is a pretty classy place from what I hear. That one incident, how it happened, why it happened, I don't know. But I am going to give a stern warning to the owner, that if anything like that happens again, don't ever come back to this council while I'm sitting on this council for a similar license. And I don't know how much clearer I can be, I can be than that, and if you want to add anything to it, be my guest.
Counselor Manning Martin.
Yes, through you to Counselor Matsoulis.
Yep.
Counselor Matsoulis, when you say till 11, do you mean for both the non-live entertainment?
No, 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 I'm just talking about the live entertainment.
Okay, so the non-live entertainment goes till 1:00 AM?
They have that anyways.
They have that already?
They have that anyways.
Okay. And then lastly, I'm just surprised at the capacity of the, the building. It's a pretty big building. It's 500, so, so I'm questioning, would there be any instances where 500 people would be in there? It has a capacity, it's all, it's on three different floors, but would they all be, would their all, three floors be going and spilling out at, on Walnut Street?
Are you asking me, or?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
If you have the answer.
Listen, I...
Just for those listening at home, probably not, because the first floor is 125, the second floor is 175, and third floor is 200. So, that's my only concern, is 500 people spilling out.
Counselor, perhaps that, that'd be perhaps best directed to the applicant?
Well, I wanted to explain how it got to 500, how they got to that capacity. Let me give you a history on the building, okay? That was two buildings at one time. It was, that was where the ward horse started out, if some of you, I don't know if any of you remember that, but Tom probably does. That's where the ward horse was, right on Walnut Street. They moved from there, they went to Linfield Street. And aside of that was the old KK Restaurant, and there were apartments upstairs. And, the restaurant, the, the ward horse had burned down, and all it was, was a shell. And, this Eddie Cravero, who's a carpenter, came and he took it over. Now, I was the counselor back then, let me just give you the history of how it got to where it was. And order for him to clean up that area, he had to make it financially feasible. And, where he had two apartments on one building, two apartments on the other, he had to expand it to make it pay off for him. So, we had many meetings with the church, with St. Basilius Church, Father Andrew, the neighborhood. At the time, George Zalodas had, Zalodas hardware in the corner. I don't remember if you were on the council then, Tom, but anyways, we had plenty of neighborhood meetings. Now, in, at the time, you have to come from the neighborhood to understand it, and I did, and Father Andrew did, and so did the rest of the people living there. It was a Portuguese neighborhood at the time, and he turned it into a Portuguese restaurant. And, when you say, how did they ever allow him that capacity? Well, at the time, all the Portuguese people lived right in the neighborhood. If you had to fill 500 spaces, okay... lived right in the neighborhood. If you had to fill 500 spaces, okay, you would have nowhere to put the cars, and you'd never get that type of permit in this day and age. I would never give a permit like that out. But at that time, that's where the Portuguese people were having their baptisms in ofados. They were having their weddings upstairs. They all lived in the neighborhood. You know, that's how it got to that number. But in the time that I had been on the council, then I left, and I was gone for 16 years, they have never filled that place. They never wanted to. It was too big. They got three different floors. And I think you'd have to hire a professional staff to be making, to promote weddings, and, you know what I'm saying? And they don't have that type of parking. So it's there. Do they use it? They don't, from what I see, you know? I mean, that's a good question. We can ask the attorney. But I've already spoke to the owner about that, and they said they're not going to be using all that. It's there, but they're not going to be using it. But that's how it got there. I just wanted to explain that.
Attorney Kelty, could you address?
He's never had over 200 people on the premises.
And that's the, the long-term plan, is to utilize it at roughly that capacity ongoing?
Yeah, because he can't park them, and he can't, you know, he can't accommodate more than that at any one time.
Thank you.
Oh, and I just want to add one more thing to that, because I've left this out. At the time, when, when the church, when the church approved it, when Eddie Cravero had it, they were using, the church allowed Eddie, Eddie Cravero, who owned the building, to use the parking lot. And, you know, that's how they came to agreeing on this, so.
But that's no longer the case.
I know that, that's why. So that's no longer, but at that time, that's, I'm just trying to explain why and how they got to 500, you know, capacity. But that, it was never used, though. So move.
Thank you, Counsel. Attorney Kelty, just while we're on that topic, is that a condition that you'd be willing, your client would be willing to accept that type of utilization? I think the sense is that 500 is a huge number for?
Yes.
So 200 is a reasonable number for the types of?
Sure. One information, Mr. President. The fire department approves occupancy.
Yes, they do.
So I think the fire department needs to go into that building, if it's been 20, 30 years, with renovations, whatever else has gone in there, to actually get, and the codes have changed with sprinkler systems. So somebody has to go in there from the fire department and look and say, "What's the legal occupancy of that building?" So I can't, I'm not going to approve 500 or 400 until I actually know what is legal, because Tipico, for some reason, got 125 people in a 400-square-foot space. So that was another disaster. So I think that that's information that's, that's, and if there was, God forbid, there was ever a fire, and there was 500 people in that building, or 400 or 300, we have to make sure it's up to code. And maybe it is. I don't know yet.
The fire department inspects annually as part of the license renewal.
They are up to code. They have to inspect.
Every, every restaurant and holder of a liquor license is, has to have sign-off from the fire department and the building inspector.
There's nothing in here from the fire department, the police. There's nothing.
I was just referring to when they have their license renewed, their liquor license.
I would certainly be more comfortable, you know, with having the fire department tell me it's okay, and what the occupancy is versus throwing out numbers. But that's just my two.
Counsel Sinowitz, just to clarify my comments, it was not to impose anything for safety reasons. It was to impose from a kind of a crowd control perspective, because there has historically been an issue with larger-than-anticipated crowds at this location. So, you know, to avoid repeating that type of history, that was kind of the motivation for my comment. Counsel Sasslaw.
Thank you, President. Through you two, Counsel Mitsulis, just a point of information. On their current license, non-live closes at 12:30. I don't know if you realize it. They've asked to extend it to 1:00. I, I don't know if you want to extend to 1:00. I'll keep it the same right now. Is 12:30 for non-live entertainment?
Non-live is fine. There's no problem with that. It's the live entertainment that he's coming in for, so.
Well, but he, but I think he's also, he's asking for change. In the non-live, he's asking to go from 12:30 to 1:00 on the application.
I want to go, I don't have a problem with 1:00. I mean, if you want it 12:30, that's fine. You know, all, all, all your, they're open till 1:00. You know what I mean? All your buyers, buyers in the city are open till 1:00. I don't have a problem with that. There is no problem there. They're in for the entertainment license. And I just had a problem of going beyond 12:00 and going, "Let's, let's start them off at 11:00 and see where it gets us." If we have no problem, you know, with six months or a year, then let them come back, and we'll give them the other hour if they want it. If you want it. You're the ones voting on it.
Once again, I'm, I'm fine with the 11. It was the non-live that, they're at 12:30. It's Shaw Ward. I just think 12:30, it might be good just so that they are out of there on time, but I'm going to let you make that decision.
We could live with 12:30.
They're, they're usually closed by then anyways, but if, you know, yeah.
All set, Counsel Sasslaw. Counsel Walsh, all set. Thank you. Counsel Sinowitz.
Okay, so I just want to understand, after they had the incident, and we went through the hearing, so their hours now are till 12:30 at night, with no live entertainment, just karaoke, DJ, and TV, I guess. So now they're coming back, and they want karaoke, they want live DJ, and they want live entertainment. Now, I have three floors, and what, what's going where? What's on the first floor? Is first floor the live band? Is the second floor the karaoke? Is the third floor the DJ? I don't understand.
No, there's.
Why is there so much, like, they just want to be able to do, in one night, let's take a Friday or a Saturday night, that's the biggest night.
Yep.
What's going on in here?
There's restaurant on the first floor. There is space on the second floor where if someone were to have a private function, they could be in the second or the third floor. And that's where the, generally, that's where live entertainment is most likely. But there would be some nights that on the first floor, Sebastian has had, like, a solo guitarist during, while the restaurant is operative. But it would be, it's not the intention that there be, you know, live band on one floor, karaoke occurring on the second floor, and, and the third thing on the first floor.
So if they have a live band, where is it?
Live band is more than likely in the biggest space, third floor.
So they could have somebody doing, you said, playing guitar and singing on the first floor, single. Or would they be doing karaoke on the first floor?
No, that's not an offering, because it's really more a part of the restaurant.
This is a tough one. They haven't had a license for a whole year. There's been no incidences. But there's been no night, three, three years? They haven't had this for three years? Was that three years ago? And now we're coming back in full force. And, and I know there's been no incidents, but they haven't had live bands, and not the, the crowd that was there when they had that incident with the brawl, and the night fight, and all that other nonsense. I'm concerned in, you're the ward councillor, but I, I'm really uncomfortable with just giving them carte blanche to do what they want, even though it's 12:30, Jim, and I'm only one person. But until I know occupancy, I can't, you know, maybe that's going to be part of the special permit before this is even approved, that the fire department has to go in and review this and see what the occupancy is on all three levels. But I have some real concerns and safety issues here. And that's it.
Thank you, Counsel Sinowitz. Counsel Mitsulis.
Yeah, thank you. I understand your concerns, and rightfully so. But this is not carte, carte blanche, believe me. And I think that punishing them for three years, which I believe I have done, I think is long enough. And if I thought in any way they would not be good neighbors and comply with the laws of this city and the city council, there's no way I would even think about this. They'd be waiting another three years. And I am not giving them what they're asking for. I'm telling them that you cannot get 12:00 from me. I will allow you till 11:00. And the reason for that is to make sure that we have no late-night fights. That was my way of saying, "I'm not going to allow this to happen." And if you prove that there are no incidences within the next six months or a year, you can come back and reapply. I'm not here to put Oliviera's out of business. I'm not here to hurt any business. I'm here to help every business stay in business and be successful. But once they do something wrong, that is when I step in. My job is the safety and the welfare of my neighborhood. And there isn't anybody in this city that can say that Jim Mitsulis does not do that. Because if I did, Tipico would not, Tipico would still be here. We put them out in six months. And the reason that Oliviera's is still here is because they have a following. They are a family-oriented restaurant. They're good for the neighborhood, and they've proved it. And that one incident that put a black mark on that restaurant should not stay with them the rest of their life when they have already proven differently. So, councillors, you vote the way you want. I'm going to make my motion to approve their entertainment license.
Counsel, before, before you?
Yeah, I'm not done.
Oh, I thought you, are you in the process of making your motion?
I'm not in the process of making a motion.
Okay, I'm sorry. I misunderstood.
I'm only telling you, that's what I'm going to do. It's my neighborhood. I watch over my neighborhood, and I know what I'm doing. And I'm not worried about the fire department, any issues of, because they come in for their inspections, as the attorney said. So I don't, I'm not worried about any of that stuff. And I'm not worried about the overcrowding, and there's just so many people you could fit on a floor, and there's just so much business out there. And I've, and I've told you, I've been watching that place for three years now. And I see who goes in there, and I see how many people. And I ask the neighbors, and I ask the people that go in there, what the crowds are like. And it's a very safe place to be. And councillors, I know how I'm voting. You're free to vote the way you want to. So, so, I mean.
Thank you, Counsel Mitsulis. Other councillors, if there's no other comments, just briefly from me, and Attorney Kelty, you know, this has come up before with other applicants, and I just want to make sure that when a motion is made here, that it's structured appropriately, because we don't have the authority to grant an entertainment license for Sunday. And this is filled out requesting Sunday hours. I mean, if you look right at the top of the application, it's a six-day license, Monday through Saturday. This application does not include Sunday entertainment. So the Sunday application process is through the mayor's office.
Mayor's office.
Right. So, and that is separate and distinct from what the council has authority to approve. So I just, I want to make sure that we're only approving what we're, correct. That's, so in your motion, if you could take note of that, that would be appreciated. Counsel Mitsulis. I think all the other councillors have had the opportunity.
Motion to close the public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Councillors, you heard the motion to close the public hearing. All in favor? Any opposed? As a vote. Counsel Mitsulis.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make, make a motion to approve an entertainment license as directed by the councillor here, for the hours being 8:00, 8:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. Thursday through Saturday.
This is for the live entertainment portion?
This is for the live, right. To, who, who is, how do you even say that name? Tops?
Churascaria.
All right, this, I can't even say the name. Tops Churacaria. I'd like to make a motion to approve an entertainment license at Tops Churacaria, doing business at, DBA, doing business as Oliviera's Steakhouse on 72 and 74 Walnut Street. I'd like to amend the license to allow for live entertainment from 8:00 to 11:00 p.m. Thursday through Saturday, Mr. Chairman. So move.
Thank you, councillor. There was also some discussion about, that they were agreeable to, of, of a maximum event size of 200.
So also, Mr. Chairman, that, that the, they only allow 200 people on the premises.
Maximum event size, perhaps, might be.
Maximum of 200 people on the premises. So move, Mr. Chairman.
On the motion, Counsel Sinowitz.
Look, if.
Isn't that for an event? Wouldn't that be for a specific event?
Correct.
Not inclusive of the restaurant? Yeah, okay, all right.
So, Mr. President, I would just make an amendment to this. I'll support his motion based on the fire department going in and approving the, the occupancy, to make sure we're within the code.
That's automatic.
And so Counsel Mitsulis will add that to his amendment?
Before this is, they do anything, the fire department needs to go in.
Right.
So we'll make that a third condition?
That's fine, Mr. Chairman.
So there are, yes, because he restructured the hours, that's so, and then two conditions. Right. Okay. Other councillors on the motion? Roll call.
Counselors Mitsulis.
Yes.
Sinowitz.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Sasslaw.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Grevell.
Yes.
Garbedian.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 19.
Thank you very much, councillors.
Reports of committees. Counsel Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we met the ad hoc committee on golf, the golf course, excuse me. And there was, in attendance was Counsel Sasslaw, Counsel Turco, and myself. There was much discussion. Thanks to Mr. Peter Cronin, we have a pretty good snapshot of where we are as a municipal golf course, and the revenue that we bring in. And there was a comparison to other area golf courses, and what kind of revenue they bring in. There were a couple of motions that, three or four motions, excuse me, that came from discussion, Counsel Sinowitz in particular. And the motions are as follows. Move that Mr. Cronin report back to the council with information on the golf cart program. So move, Mr. President.
Is it cart or card?
Cart. C-A-R-T.
D. Card, I think. Golf card, I think.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Thank you for writing cart instead of card.
Councillors, you heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? As a vote. Counsel Gould. Council Gould.
Could have been CART, Mr. Spanos, right.
It could have been card, but it is card.
Second motion. Move that Mr. Cronin research surrounding area golf memberships, types of memberships, and junior memberships in particular, such as Gannon, Sagamore, Beverly Golf and Tennis, and any other relevant courses. I believe I have that correct. So moved, Mr. President.
Councilors, you heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed, it's a vote. Council Gould.
Move that Mr. Cronin report back to the council with greens fees and CART fees from competing golf courses. So moved, Mr. President.
Councilors, you heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed, it's a vote. Council Gould.
And lastly -- Yes, I was at the meeting. Lastly, move that Mr. Cronin submit a recommendation for the council on how to increase revenues by 75,000 to 140,000. This was a recommendation of Counselor Sinowitz and Counselor Saslaw. So moved, Mr. President.
Councilors, you heard the motion. All in favor? Councilor Sinowitz.
That's income, not revenue.
Income. You heard Counsel Gould's motion.
I was at the meeting, and it is income, not revenue.
Councilors, you heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed, it's a vote. All set, Council Gould? Thank you, Council Gould. Counselor Grevell.
Counsel Gould, could you make -- could you make a motion on the -- there was this --
Yes, I'm sorry.
The liquor license was kept in committee.
I'm sorry, Mr. --
Could you make a motion to have the club manager, Peter Cronin, do a survey of other cities who have municipal courses, whether or not they offer liquor licenses, how they do it, and whether they hire a third party, et cetera? So, he can come to that meeting prepared to talk to us about, you know, what they do, how they do it, how it's executed, what it earns, et cetera. I'd like to have a thorough understanding of what other communities are doing.
So moved, as Counselor Grevell said.
Councilors, you heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed, it's a vote.
We are gonna keep that in discussion in the subcommittee. So, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Counsel Grevell.
Thank you, Council Gould. This evening, we also had a meeting of the committee of the whole. We had one item on the agenda. All councilors were present. It was an update from the PBD Main Streets Group. We had a presentation provided by Karen Soya-Knad and Diane Healy from the Chamber of Commerce. But they were here this evening in their capacity as members of the Main Streets Organization. They provided a video that was graciously produced by Grave Ark Associates, aerial photo -- aerial video of the downtown, which was -- showed the significant enhancements that have been made as a result of the completion of the Mass Works project. They also provided a presentation outlining the objectives and the accomplishments of the Main Streets Group. A number of councilors commented on the presentation and the video, mentioning that the changes in the downtown have been quite noticeable, that there is a level of excitement that is sensed. There's a -- words used such as momentum, and that people are, in fact, noticing the efforts that the -- these changes in the downtown that have been driven, some in some large ways and some in small ways, by the Main Streets Group. And a number of councilors expressed their thanks and gratitude for those that are involved with this organization. There were no motions. This is a report of progress. The group typically provides updates to the committee of the whole twice a year, and this was the second update. Motion, orders, and resolutions. Council Mazzulis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have one motion. I got a call from a resident on Tremont Street that said there were signs up that -- and they were, I don't remember exactly what they said, but they were for heavy vehicles, truck vehicles, to be excluded on Tremont Street. I don't know what size they were, but those signs were up at one time. Why the police took them down, I'm sure they had a reason. If they could send me a communication, let me know, or put the signs back up if they were taken down by someone else, so.
Councilors, you heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed, it's a vote. Council Mazzulis.
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counsel. Council Sinowitz.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to make a motion of the Department of Public Services. I know it's early, but a resident always gets a sand barrel at the corner of Harrison at the end of Jackson's. Want to make sure that they place it there at the appropriate time. So moved.
Councilors, you hear the motion. All in favor? Any opposed, it's a vote. Council Sinowitz.
Just a couple of things. Next week, we're having a meeting in the Municipal Safety Committee about a pretty good-sized subdivision in Ward Six. And what I'm concerned about is -- and there'll probably be 60, 70 neighbors there, that's what I'm guessing, it's gonna be a big turnout. But what I'm seeing and hearing from people, because the lack of -- and no offense to the two reporters over there, there's a -- seems to be a lack of information coming out from what we're doing as a council, because none of the subcommittees are televised. And then what happens is, and it happened a week ago, I was -- I had a problem with my back, and I was sitting home in bed, nothing better to do but watching the council meeting. And I turned it on at 7:00 for a subcommittee meeting, nothing. 7:15, nothing, nothing, nothing. Then the council came on, and then it was like, okay, report out of committee, motion to approve this, bang, done. And I sat there and was trying to think, as somebody who's watching it, what did we just -- what did they just vote on? So there's been like no information of what we're doing, because the Salem News, for one, doesn't cover anything anymore. So, I'd like to make a motion that the cable televise subcommittee meetings. So moved.
Councilors, you heard the motion. All in favor? Council Gould, on the motion?
I think that's a wonderful idea, Counselor Sinowitz. I think we've talked that through, but it's about time we do it. Transparency is what we're all about, so let's do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Gould. And I'd like to start it next Tuesday night, if possible. So moved, I guess, on the --
Councilors, you heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Council Sinowitz.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next question, I guess, through you to the city clerk. Yard sale permits. Are you the issuing authority when somebody comes in? So, through -- Mr. President, through you to City -- Mr. Spanos, what is the maximum number of yard sale permits an individual can have during a year?
Two.
Okay. So what I'd like to do, I'd like to make a motion to the city clerk's office to give me the amount of yard sale permits. 720 Lowell Street has polled over the last year. He's created a permanent business there, and he's created a town dump on his front lawn with everything and anything on his lawn. And I'm getting complaints from the neighbors, it's a real eyesore. So I had the building inspector out there last week, so I want to find out where that stands. So he has some teeth to say, it's gotta go. So moved.
Councilors, you heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed, it's a vote. Council Sinowitz.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Council Sinowitz. Council Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one motion. This is a motion that I made a couple of years ago as well, but it's a request of the Building Department to kind of travel around the city and remove any freestanding advertising signs that are on public property. So moved. And on that motion --
Counsel, go ahead on the --
On the motion, Mr. President, it's just there are certain places, particularly some of the islands, the traffic islands across the city. And if you come off the highway, you see ads for snowplow -- snowblower repairing, or snowplow repairing, whatever it is, fitness centers, and there are some others. And it really is an eyesore. And they're just kind of stuck on public property, and it just attracts from streetscape. So moved.
Councilors, you heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed, it's a vote. Council Walsh. Thank you, Council Walsh. Council Manning Martin.
Thank you. I read in the paper, and a few people had asked me about the annual police report, so unless I missed it.
It was the last meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. I did miss it. Thank you. And the -- just a reminder, I know at the last meeting, Colton Buckley, you rang the bell to remind everybody. Excellent, good. So that's this weekend. So, for those councilors that are walking, I will see -- David's running. I'll be walking. It starts at 10:00, but registration starts at 8:00. I plan to get there at probably 9:00, and we can register then and walk together as we did last year. So I'll see you all there Sunday. Thank you.
Just a point of information, there's also a website if you want to preregister for that event. Thank you, Council Manning Martin. Council Charis.
Thank you. I'd like to move to accept 8D and follow the recommendations of consultant, the city solicitor.
Counsel, so we're sending this to the city solicitor, is that --
I believe that is a recommendation.
Yeah, I think so. So, councilors, you heard the motion to receive item 8D and refer to the city solicitor? All in favor? Any opposed on the motion?
Yeah, if we could have a report back by the next meeting, are we gonna pursue this by the city solicitor?
The next meeting's next week, so if --
Okay.
I don't know what the workload is there, but that seems --
Just a request.
We'll put the request for him to handle it in an expeditious manner. I just don't want to --
Sure.
Thank you, councilors. So, councilors, you heard the motion?
Thank you.
All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Council Charis.
That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Council Charis. Council Saslaw.
Thank you, Council President. Motion to receive item 8C and refer it to the Building Commissioner.
Councilors, you heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed, it's a vote. Council Saslaw.
And just for my councilor's own information, the parties are back and talking about this, so we are trying to work it out. I do want the council to know that, as they are aware of some of the people involved. So we are trying to get this worked out, and that communication. Chino has reopened up since we received this letter, so just wanted to let the council know that. No further motions, thank you.
Thank you, Council Saslaw. Council Turco.
Mr. President, under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 8E and set up a public hearing.
Councilors, you heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed, it's a vote. Council Turco.
Mr. President, motion to have Public Services repair a sidewalk, which has some major issues at 18 Diane Road.
Councilors, you heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed, it's a vote. Council Turco.
That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Turco. Council Grevell.
Thank you, Council President. Under suspension of rules, I'd like to refer items 7A and 7B to the Finance Committee.
Councilors, you heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed, it's a vote. Council Grevell.
I would like to make a motion because, you know, we worked a long time on Crystal Lake, and we finally got some action. I feel like this is Groundhog Day, but we're getting near Christmas again, and I constantly look up from my seat at the deteriorating hall, and I get to hear the reverberation of my voice in the clearly difficult audio system. And tonight, we got to watch again on the mini-screen a presentation by the PBD Main Streets Group. So, I would kind of like an update on where we stand with the status of the upgrades that we requested some three to four years ago, and hopefully that some progress, we could be told that there's at least some progress being made on maybe contracting or looking at something to finish this job. So moved.
Councilors, you heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed, it's a vote. On the motion, Counsel Gould.
Mr. President, if I can help Counsel Grevell with that. Counselor, if it's okay, can we amend it to be specific about putting it on this specific people that are -- I mean, I think it's at the purchasing level, so we need a report back from purchasing in particular.
Yeah, I would be happy to hear back from purchasing and from --
Community development.
Community development, and we've got a new building -- Anybody that's involved in it, I mean it's --
No, but let's be specific and have them come and talk to us.
Yeah, it's really getting to be frustrating to just keep asking and not getting anything back.
Thank you, Counsel Grevell. On -- here I'll set. All on the motion. You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed, it's a vote. Counsel Grevell.
And I just want to congratulate Tom Walsh on his hot-fought victory in the election. But, no, and I would also like to thank Ian Manning Martin for the effort that she put forward for the sheriff's position. It takes a lot of guts to put in that effort. And remember, Veterans Day is tomorrow, so be here.
Thank you, Counsel Grevell. Before I leave you, are you available to do finance -- that finance meeting next week on Thursday at 7:00?
Possibly.
Okay, that was a definite maybe. We'll talk about it. Thank you.
Is there a meeting on Tuesday?
Yes.
That I heard. Can we do it on Tuesday, just in case I have to --
The issue we have there is some -- we have a CPC meeting that night as well, so there may be some -- I'm not sure if that's going to represent an issue for --
It should be a quick meeting, I wonder if we --
I imagine it will be.
If we can get off the meeting at 6:00, can we do 6:00 on Tuesday?
On Tuesday.
Just if -- only --
That's a direct conflict with the CPC, but that's not going to affect it.
The only reason I'm asking is because a week from -- well, next Thursday, we have an event going on at work that I don't know if I can get here at 7:00. I'm pretty sure I can get here at 7:30, but --
Understood, well --
6:00 Tuesday would be great.
That sounds like a winner. Thank you, Counsel Grevell. Counsel Garabedian.
No motions, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Garabedian. Counsel Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a co-motion with Counselor Saslaw to have the bite path trimmed behind 11-Clock Road, specifically to enhance the -- apparently, there's some poisoned sumac and other vegetation that's overgrowing in this neighbor's yard. So if we can help with that, so moved.
Councilors, you heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed, it's a vote. Counsel Gould.
I'd like to make a co-motion with Counsel Mazzulis to have a tree removed at 46 Highland Park that's wreaking havoc on the home. So moved.
Councilors, you heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed, it's a vote.
Nothing more, sir.
Thank you, Counsel Gould. Councilors, no motion, but if you could, from a scheduling standpoint, jot down Sunday, December 11th in the evening for a holiday gathering? If you could note that, that would be appreciated. I think that would be our Christmas party, yes. We will give you details to follow. I just want to make sure that you have the date --
It's a mystery, right?
The date down, yeah. As I used to tell my children, it's a mystery, right? Very good. Moving along, item 8A. Counselor Mazzulis, can I get a motion to receive? Councilors, you heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed, it's a vote. Item 8B. Counsel Walsh, can I get a motion to receive and approve, all papers being in order?
So moved, Mr. President.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed, it's a vote. Item 8J. Counsel Manning Martin, can I get a motion to receive and refer to the public hearing, item 4C? You heard the motion from Counsel Manning Martin. All in favor? Any opposed, it's a vote. Take a motion to adjourn. Counsel Walsh.
Mr. President, did you do it --
Hold on, Counsel Walsh.
Yeah, before we adjourn.